Mr. Truett, can you hear us? Okay, welcome everyone. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll start out with the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, so everyone can stand and find the flag and we'll get started. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. So, welcome everyone to this special call meeting. The, uh, most likely lots of discussion tonight, lots of things to cover and, you know, using Zoom it can be a little choppy at times, so everyone bear with us and be patient and, and, uh, you know, we'll try to, everyone, whenever, when someone asks a speaking, we'll try to let them finish out before any responses or comments and so forth. So, first item is communications. And we need to, we need to discuss the 2021 school calendar. So I'll turn that over to Ms. Schloss.
Okay, I just thought it would be a good opportunity to update the board as things continue to change. We did start our school year off with an alternate calendar. And if you remember, we started out with some staff development days on the front end, as well as staff development days on the back end. Last year, when we closed school abruptly, if you'll remember, we had several days, I think almost two weeks, where staff actually had to come in and fulfill their time. This year, we did it a little bit different, and if you, a good starting day and a good ending day is one thing that came out of the calendar. We actually started on August the 26th, and we are going to end on May the 26th. Now, in a normal, uh, school year, and I guess that's not a good word, let's use typical, in a typical school, uh, world, um, our kiddos have 175 days. But this year, we adopted the plan to where if you start that Monday closest to Labor Day, that you can actually do something a little bit different. So actually, this time, our students have the 166 days, and that accounts for some of those staff development days. Our teachers in Marion County are employed for 187 days, a couple of days more than, than some districts. Um, the questions come about, you know, what does that do for, or, you know, for benefits and things like that. That can actually have at least five days off to get a full year of service credit for retirement. Classified folks, we've got different staff on different kinds of calendars. And so that's just what their contracts look like. So, we have some folks with 184 days, 183 days. And again, depending on their number of days, again, it goes back to that, um, uh, those number of days. If, if more days are taken off, then they receive a partial year's credit, and it is something that, um, is, is a percentage wise. So obviously, if you just miss a few days, it's gonna be in that 90% range. Obviously, let's say there's a medical leave and someone has to be off for several weeks or even several months, then obviously, it would look a lot different. We did participate in fall break this year, and I think most, most folks were very happy about that. Uh, I think parents were ready for fall break, as well as staff. We are scheduled at the end of this week for another, um, non-traditional school day, NTI, on the 18th. And then we have a full two weeks of Christmas break, and that does encompass Christmas and New Years. We have a staff development day on June the 4th, so we have two full weeks, and then a staff development day. That, that's probably something that folks want to be aware of. If you've been following the governor, uh, there has been a lift on the executive order about coming back to school, so that they have changed some of the color coding. Now, uh, they are recommending that schools, uh, they can go back as early as the 4th, but that they are recommending that schools go back on January the 11th. But again, that is a local decision, and it's one that does not just give certain metrics. I was asked, is there a certain number that we're gonna go by in Marion County to determine whether or not that we're gonna go back to school? And Mr. Lyons and myself both agree that it's not just about a number, there's multiple factors that go into that. And obviously, that's our positivity rate. Also, we want to look at the number of staff, uh, that have COVID and/or quarantine, and also, uh, any students. Now, obviously, if the students quarantine, or unfortunately ill, they're not gonna come back to school, but those are the things that, that we look at. Another thing that we also look at is in the event that we have staff that just have a normal, uh, medical leave, like maybe the birth of a child, or maybe they have a scheduled elective surgery, and I'll, I'll use knee replacement as, as one of those. And so, our calendar, as far as the start date and the end date, is set. Uh, right now, we are just balancing if, if it's safe to come to school. Uh, we continue to talk to our staff, and we, we've surveyed those folks. We are trying to make every accommodation possible. We are making, I think, every accommodation possible, and if we aren't, we just, we, uh, we ask our staff to reach out to us. Uh, we understand that parents want students back in school, but the most important thing is that we are healthy. There is a positive, the vaccine has been made available to Kentucky, and the governor has ensured that teachers will be in the second phase of that. Uh, we are surveying our staff to find out whether or not that's something that they, uh, would participate in. And we are optimistic that we could see that vaccine as early as the end of January, um, and that we would be finished up, uh, by February with that. Uh, again, a lot of details go into that, and we want to make sure again that folks are safe and healthy. If we do return back to school, and I say if, because a lot of things can happen in the next three to five weeks, we're gonna make sure that any, uh, of our staff, our students, that have extenuating circumstances, our health issues, we're gonna make sure that they either work remotely, or they're given extra PPE equipment, and we still have a lot, lots of that, uh, to be, uh, distributed as we need. And, uh, we are just always looking at making sure that our students are safe, um, our staff, and our families. So, I just felt like with everything going on since we were having a work session and we were going into a, uh, break, that I would just kind of bring that up, because it just looks so much different. I, I meant, for instance, we typically operate on a nine-week system, and this year, we are operating on an eight-week system. Uh, we will also, as we continue to review numbers and look at the data, we're going to notify parents through multiple, um, outlets about when we would return to school, and then when the date would be that they could actually return and transition back in, if they would like to go in person. And if you'll remember, we're doing that in pretty short increments. Other districts have, have often made before a semester long, but, uh, we, we want to give, we want to give parents the flexibility of kiddos opting in any, you know, at set points, but at any time, if they want to opt out and do virtual, then, and that's something we've always done, and we want to make that available. Just wanted to, to go over that, and obviously, if there's questions, um, I would love to hear those. If there's additional information you would like for our office or principals to get out, um, I, I'd be glad to do that. I know that our staff, uh, at each of our schools, they're going out of their way. We're doing drive-throughs and winter wonderlands. I know tonight Glasscock's piecing out their shirts yesterday. Uh, LES did a winter wonderland. We have a tractor trailer load of milk at Marion County High School, like a tractor trailer load. And so, Ms. Wheeler, the cafeteria ladies, um, our, our partners with, uh, Prairie Farms and GFS, our, uh, transportation staff, our support staff, so many people, our cafeteria ladies, so many people are just making that a, a really big positive for us. So I want, just want to give a big shout out. Uh, while this is not a typical year, I do think that our staff is, is doing everything they can to provide some things that, that, uh, just add a little bit of happy and a little bit of joy, uh, especially during this season, so. Any questions or, uh, anything you want to, to put out, or, or let me know, or, or?
Hi, this is Peggy. I, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
One of, one of them is when, uh, if the students are sick or whatever, would, could they still do, uh, computer from home to where they still get it counted? You know, because we have so many people that are in quarantine for 10 to 14 days. I just want to make sure they have that opportunity to get that work in. Uh, the other question is, would board members be allowed to be included in the vaccine? That's it.
Could you repeat that last question? I couldn't understand it just because of the audio.
Oh, sorry. Would, could board members be included in the vaccine if possible?
That, that would be a question that we would ask. Um, I, I, from what I'm hearing, it, it would be the folks that are with the students firsthand, which could mean that even myself, I may not be included, because that's not, I'm not with students every single day. So I think, uh, Peggy, that it would just depend on how much of the vaccine we get. And, um, we can obviously put, uh, board members' names in and say that they would, but it'll just depend on what they tell us we're allowed to do. And as far as the students, um, if we return to school, um, and I, again, I, I just don't want to say when, because, you know, we just never know what's gonna happen. But if we return to school and a child is sick with COVID or quarantine, absolutely, uh, because we do have that distance learning as an option. Okay?
Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee, unmute, we can't hear you yet. We need you unmute.
I'm sorry, yes, I have a question. Um, not knowing the date that we will return, what kind of leeway will the parents and students know if, if, say, we're gonna go back January 4th? When will that be announced, and that way, uh, for planning?
Right. I mean, we, we try to give parents a heads up, um, a- as soon as possible. Um, I think Mr. Lyons and I are concerned about holiday numbers. Um, I think our numbers definitely prove that, um, over Thanksgiving, we saw some increase. And I understand that, um, Christmas is gonna be a big holiday. Uh, I, I think New Year's could be as well. And so if you look at New Year's and, and folks participate in activities, if you're looking at, um, 14 days, it could actually be that Tuesday after Martin Luther King, if you looked at that date, which would be actually January the 19th. I definitely would like to give folks more of a, um, lead than just the Friday before. But that's just gonna be, you know, I'm gonna say, anywhere between three to five days. How about that?
That's fine. I was just, I was just curious.
Well, and, and I, I get it. I know that, you know, parents have to make, uh, babysitting arrangements, and I fully understand that. I don't have to do that anymore, but I fully remember doing that, and I, I understand, uh, how tough that is. But I, I will do my best and work with the Health Department and team and make sure we've got good numbers. Uh, the last thing we want to do is bring kids back and then have a big spread. So, I'll do my best. I'll do, I, I'll, I'll get my crystal ball out.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, lots of good, lots of good information. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 3B, Discussion of District Facilities Plan Number Four. And, uh, I suppose I'll ask Mr. Randy to, um, kind of give us a summary of, of what, uh, what KDE is suggesting.
Okay. Well, first of all, thanks for inviting me to, to be present tonight. Um, I think you all have hard copies of the, uh, KD comments that were provided, and, uh, also a draft copy that I had prepared just based on those comments that I feel like, uh, starts to begin to address those, uh, those comments. I could share my screen and just go through those, uh, but it doesn't look like I have permission to share. Is there any way that I can get permission to share? If not, we can certainly just go through the, the hard copies that you have.
No, I think we can, I think we can make that accommodation. Let's see. Mr. Lyons is working on that.
Yes, okay. Looks like I have permission now, so I will share my screen. So hopefully, you all can see, uh, a couple of Excel files open. Uh, one is KD comments, and the other one is, uh, my suggested revisions. Can you all see that? No.
Not.
What is it? Does she get to mask her shirt? Just, can she mask? Yeah. There we go.
All right.
Okay, you can see it now? Okay, great, great. Okay, so, um, so I'm gonna walk through this kind of line item by line item. Uh, just a reminder of where we were. We had submitted this draft DFP to KDE. Uh, and John Gilbert, who is the, uh, project architect that covers Marion County as a district, had responded with these comments, um, and asked for, um, and this was in response to the district requesting the hearing packet, the public hearing packet. And John requested that the board take a look at these comments and decide how to respond before he, uh, sends that hearing packet, uh, to the district so that the district can move forward with the approval of the DFP in that manner. So I'm just gonna start at the top and go through these, uh, one by one, and, uh, kind of show you how I responded to that. Uh, and hopefully, as we go through it, it'll be self-evident. And, uh, I know there's a couple of big things that we need to go through, uh, to make sure that you all understand how, um, how I've suggested responding to that and how the board would like to respond to that. Uh, so starting at the top, adjust the plan organization to reflect the proposed Calvary being, uh, a K-12, um, or a K-5, excuse me, so you can see in red here that I have made that, uh, change as far as Calvary being a K-5 facility, uh, which it currently is as well. This is just a comment about the, uh, the, the district's, uh, enrollment moving forward. Um, and that's a column that KD adds as far as just kind of looking into the future to anticipate enrollment trends up or down. Uh, they're using a minus 2% to project Marion County, uh, enrollment across the board. That may or not, may not be accurate, but at least, uh, gives a sense of where we're headed. The, the next one, uh, the next several actually have to do with, uh, the elementary schools. So, they are just noting here that they use the SAR information from 2019. They, uh, are not using the, the past, uh, year's enrollment numbers because of the pandemic. Uh, so that's just a recognition of that. Um, and this is just a recognition, uh, or they're them identifying the A1 versus A5, uh, designations with regards to the facilities. So this comment is, uh, is a good one. Uh, since we are completing the addition at the middle school that adds three classrooms and one science classroom, uh, John caught that, uh, the enrollment at the middle school will actually be increased by 100 students with the addition of those three spaces. Um, so that is recognized, uh, with, uh, with the change to the 521 as a capacity, uh, which actually is, aligns very well with the actual student enrollment of 524. The next couple of comments are specifically related to the elementary schools are, and are important. Um, this comment has to do with the utilization rate of the schools being 85%. Um, and I think it's important to kind of just read this, uh, kind of italicized one. Um, the, the actual enrollment to be served by a new facility shall not be inflated to meet the minimum requirements by redistricting students from other schools if such redistricting result in those schools having their student enrollment decrease to below 85% of the school's capacity. So, uh, a couple of things there that were, that were causing that. Um, the biggest thing was Lebanon Elementary School's capacity that he had calculated, and rightly so, based on the information he had in his hands, uh, of 541. Um, so that 85% capacity rule is for each individual school, and then collectively for all, uh, schools in a similar group, meaning in this case, the elementary schools. Um, so I'm gonna jump down, um, and here's the note specifically about Lebanon Elementary School. So we had calculated the capacity of 469, he had it at 541. Um, I'm gonna jump down to, um, this proposed language of how I have adjusted, uh, Lebanon Elementary School to get that capacity down to 400. Um, so what we had previously, and I'll put these side by side. Lebanon Elementary. So we had shown, uh, an, an additional additions of five resource rooms, one preschool, uh, and then the locally identified program. And so what I did was actually show that it was possible to renovate some of the standard classrooms to address those programmatic deficiencies, uh, the expanding the administration area, uh, be, uh, renovating one of the standard classrooms to become a preschool, renovating two of the standard classrooms to become resource rooms, multiple resource rooms, and then renovating two of the standard classrooms to expand the library. So that basically reduced the number of standard classrooms, uh, which capacity is based on, so that that number came down to 400 versus the 541. The other, uh, the other note here, uh, was obviously, uh, looking at the enrollment of all four of those schools, uh, together, uh, and to kind of determining, uh, how those were going to be split when you, uh, show Calvary being built for 350 students initially, uh, with common spaces for 400, so that that could be expanded in the future. Um, that had been the previous conversation with regards to the new Calvary. So, um, I just took a stab at showing 350 students at each of the four elementary schools. And, uh, so that kind of split them up evenly across the board. You will note here at West Marion Elementary School, when I calculated that, that pushes that capacity or enrollment over capacity down below the 85%. So that's something that we need to take a close look at. And that could be rectified by showing that 375 students were going to West Marion, and only 325 students were going at Glasscock, going to Glasscock, since that enroll, uh, capacity is slightly less. So, that's, that's a, a conversation I want to come back to, but before I do that, I'm gonna run through the rest of the comments, uh, and then we'll open it up for, um, kind of comment suggestions and, and conversation. The next, next one here was adjusting the format. Uh, that was kind of a minor thing, and I have done that to show the, the gross, uh, capacity or gross square footage and the net square footage as, as John had suggested doing, uh, here in these line items. Uh, the next comment was about the Knight Academy. Because it was constructed in 1995, it is less than 30 years old. And, um, if we were, we were showing that being a change in use being, uh, going from a middle school to, uh, a high school or a middle school to an elementary school, we hope, we could have included that here, uh, under Priority One. But because, uh, it, we're not doing that, John's comment, KD's comment, was that this should be listed as a Priority Five project, meaning, uh, it'll fall below the district, the district need, and also will be in a category where restricted funds cannot be used for that renovation at this point in time. But obviously, uh, you know, 2025 is not that far away. So, I have shown, as, as KD has suggested, down at the bottom of this list, that the renovations to Calvary and that scope of work is in, this is Priority Five. Marion County High School, the work there has been captured in a BG1 that was just recently fully processed and, and approved. Uh, that has now fully been approved by both KDE Facilities and KDE Finance. So that work, uh, will not be shown on the district facility plan as a need, uh, since it's captured in the BG1 as an actual project that, uh, it's assumed that the board intends to move forward with. So that will come off completely, um, and I have taken that off, uh, of the list completely up here. Small thing here at Marion County Middle School, updating the, uh, area of the facility, the square footage of this facility to request, to reflect the recent additions that we have, that are in the process to reflect the recent additions that we have, that are in the process of actually completing. Uh, so that facility goes from the 66,310 square feet to the uh, 71,800 square feet uh, due to that addition. And the year gets noted here as far as when that addition occurred. Um, Glasscock Elementary School, let me scroll down there. So uh, the comment here is that for 375 student elementary school, the max model program that KD allows is the 47,000 uh, 811. So Glasscock, as it currently exists at 55, if, at 55,680 uh, is over that amount. So they're saying that we cannot show this special education space being listed as an addition to the facility. So um, we had actually already included a note above that that space was going to be um, uh, renovated to become the FMD space. Uh, and then that cost is reflected to reflect the renovation versus adding that space to the building. Similar note about West Marion Elementary School. Um, and the, the only difference here was 110 square feet. So the max for a 425 student elementary school is 50,004 or 50,649. And um, it's at 43,219 currently, and we were showing an addition based on the spaces that were listed of 7410, which put it 110 square feet over the KDE maximum. So what I did to address that is leave that renovation and those additions alone and come down here under uh, priority three projects uh, where we had indicated constructing, enlarging the gymnasium by 2,000 square feet. I've changed that to 1,890 square feet to show that building to now be in compliance with that uh, KDE requirement. Um, so we went through Lebanon, uh, and again, um, the changes that I made there show renovating the standard classrooms to address those programmatic needs. Uh, so that that capacity comes down to 400 uh, and is not calculated at the 541. Um, the uh, the, there's a, there's a slew of comments under 1E, renovating existing facilities to meet safety requirements. Um, KD has started adding this very specific language um, here uh, that references KRS 158.162. And so they requested that this language be added to each of the facilities under 1E, which I have done so. And then under 1F, um, the only change that I made there was the change to the square footage and to the year of construction uh, for Marion County Middle School. And we covered the change at West Marion to the gymnasium under priority three. And then the last uh, well, we, we've talked about the relate, the, the relocated Knight Academy. The last note here was making sure that the district need adjust accordingly to the changes above. So uh, you'll see that reflected in this number, which the district need is now So that's adding up all the projects that are listed in priority 1, 2, 3, uh, and 4, uh, and not 5. And it's important to note that that number does not reflect the uh, high school because that, that project and monies has already been captured in a BG1. And renovating Knight Academy fell below that line, and so it's now in priority 5. Um, so that kind of rounds us out as far as the comments go. Um, I think the three big comments that um, I want to make sure the board understands is that the the, the high school project is no longer going to be listed on the DFP because now there's a BG1 that's addressing that. Number two, uh, the Knight Academy falls to a priority 5 project because of the age of the building and that it's not 30 years old yet and doesn't qualify for a major renovation. And then the, the third, and probably the biggest comment that probably requires some conversation is the adjustments to the elementary school to make sure that we're meeting that 85% utilization rate. And um, you know, recognizing that this proposal kept Calvary at a 350 student uh, elementary with, with common spaces and the potential to add full, uh, two classrooms to bring that capacity and that enrollment up to 400 in the future if that was ever needed. So I realized I went through that um, fairly quickly. Um, so I'll, I'll kind of um, stop talking and if you all have any questions or conversation, I'll be glad to jump in and try to answer anything I can.
Hey, thank you, Randy. So does anyone uh, have any questions or want to start off with any comments?
This is Joey, I have a question. Um, a couple of them actually. Um, hey, Randy, uh, I'm new to this, so.
Well, good to meet you, Joey.
Nice to meet you too, Randy, and if I, forgive me if I ask questions that have not been asked before because I'm trying to get caught up.
Sure.
On Marion County Middle School, we have a new printout, um, and maybe it's just a typo, but the 421 maximum capacity, is that going to be updated to 521?
Yes, so I, I realize that uh, I hadn't updated that when I sent that out. And actually, in a conversation that Scott Spalding and I were having, I realized that I hadn't done that. So you'll see right here that I have updated that to 521 and instead of the 421.
Okay, okay. Um, and secondly, and, and maybe this is a, just because I don't know, but uh, we're listing Calvary as a K through 5, is that, has that only been the discussion? Is there not a preschool discussion with this? Um, I just, every other school is listed as preschool through 5. And what advantage or disadvantage is that to us for it to be listed as a K through 5?
Well, I'll, I'll jump in and tell you what I know, and then it's probably, um, it's probably pretty limited, quite honestly. I think that's listed as a K-5 facility because that's what the existing Calvary is currently listed as, as a K-5 facility and does not include preschool. Uh, and that preschool is currently contained at the other three elementary schools. Um, so that's probably more of an operational um, issue. Um, that could certainly be changed to a preschool through 5. And the KDE model program actually includes a preschool classroom in that model program, even though preschoolers are not included in the enrollment of, of that facility. So it wouldn't necess, it wouldn't necessarily change the enrollment, but preschoolers are not included in those enrollment numbers.
Okay, so is, is it a situation where we're listing it as K through 5, but that means we can't come in later and put preschool in? Or is it something where we need to have it in now in case we do put in preschool?
Um, I, I think it would be my suggestion and recommendation if the board and the district believes that they want to accommodate preschool at Calvary, uh, similar to the other three elementary schools, that we should go ahead and change that uh, to be uh, preschool. And that's pretty simple change on, you know, just text on a page at this point in time. So I think that might be a conversation for the board and any other uh, opinions that anyone might have.
Okay. Um, and, and my last question, and once again, I'm, I'm new at this, so forgive me, but um, on the renovation to the upgrading all existing facilities, when we have number two, the Marion County High, is any of that included on the BG that has already been approved?
Yes, um, so you're asking about the, this entire section that basically KD marked out? So that, that exact, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, um, well, I'm referring to uh, number two, what you have below the renovation to upgrade all existing facilities. Um, new.
The uh, the, the description that was contained in the um, the DFP is the exact description that was uh, included in the BG1 that was approved by the board a couple of months ago. Yes. Including the addition of the uh, CTE spaces. Like career and technical education spaces.
Randy, this is Carrie, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Joey is probably referring to um, the fact that Marion County High School is still included under 1E, item 2. And so with those, um, you know, those are all safety features, they're ADA compliance things under 1E and 1F. So would we be addressing those items uh, when we renovate the high school under the current BG1?
Yes, we would, and that is an oversight on my part. Um, those scopes of work are included on that BG1. And uh, I realize that KD didn't make that comment either, but they should not be showing up under 1E or 1F either, since we are addressing those scopes of work uh, in the project, in the BG1 project that's been approved.
Great, thank you.
So the, this, and that's a really good catch and a, and a good comment. So this would be deleted. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just um, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll, I'll highlight it uh, so we can keep it on here, but know that we're going to eliminate that and eliminate uh, this. Good catch. Joey, you got any other questions?
Uh, no, sir, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
Uh, this is uh, Jim, and I just have, I guess, a comment or question primarily to the board. Uh, and this goes back to the enrollment numbers and hitting our capacity percentages. Uh, I'm wondering if, you know, if you all think we should have a, a work session or something where we kind of look at the redistricting aspect of this. Um, I do think it's an integral part of the whole DFP planning process, but really kind of look to see how kids will be moved around uh, to accommodate these buildings. Uh, you know, we don't want to be building structures and then not fully utilizing everything, so I just want to get feedback from the rest of the board on, on that idea.
Well, Jim, I, I mean, I would, I would agree with that, I think that'd be a, I think that'd be a good starting point. Uh, and I had some, some questions and some things for Randy, but before I ask Randy those questions, does anyone else want to comment on Jim's remarks?
This is Peggy, I'd like to, if possible. Um, I agree totally with you, Jim, on that. I know when U of L does their uh, enrollment, that they're pretty, they're not off very far. And I know uh, land is not growing in Marion County as far as where we're gonna put people if they do move into our county. Because the land, as far as I know, people aren't, you don't have farmers giving up their land at all unless they're dying or, or something else is happening. Um, so I ha, I have concerns on that part. Uh, as far as um, enrollment, like you say, uh, when you go to moving the kids around in the community and stuff, I sure don't want to see the, the percentage drop way down there to where we're getting in trouble in other ways too. And the money funding and everything that goes to help to keep the buildings and everything going, I don't want to see us lose anything. Or cost is where we don't need to be spending it. So uh, I agree 100% with, with having a person-to-person meeting if possible.
Thank you, Peggy. Anyone else?
This is Carrie, I mean, I, I don't disagree that redistricting is a huge part of uh, what we're going to do. Um, and I think I've said it before, I think regardless of what we do or don't do, redistricting is going to need to be a part of the conversation and um, a huge planning process that we undertake. Um, I think we can absolutely have the conversation, but I also believe that until we know what school facilities plan, we're gonna go with, then we don't exactly know the best way to redistrict our students. Um, so that would be my only comment on that. And then with the U of L um, population projections, historically, I don't believe that they've been far off, I'm curious to see as to uh, whether or not they've included any kind of COVID-related bump uh, in their projections for ours or any other school district. So um, that would be my comment on the U of L projection there.
I would, I would tell you that the information that KD is utilizing here as far as projecting that minus 2%, that, that has not been updated this year to reflect any kind of pandemic um, you know, push one way or the other, quite honestly.
Okay, any other uh, comments on, on Mr. Eubanks' question?
Yeah, this is Joey. Um, I do agree that, that redistricting is something we need to talk about. Um, however, if we do get into talking about redistricting, are we doing twice the work by looking at two different what ifs? Um, in a, in a sense, if we don't know where we're sending the, the kids, um, we're doing twice the work redistricting when the fact is we haven't redistricted in a long time. I mean, we've put it off and put it off, and now we want to do two models of it. Um, I, I just, I feel like that, that is uh, that's asking a lot. Not uh, getting the cart before its horse, I mean, in a sense, so.
Okay. Well, I guess it's the chicken or the egg con, I mean, conversation, right? Redistrict before you know what buildings are gonna go in, or do you build the buildings then redistrict? I would lean on the side that Mr. Eubanks does. You know, and I, I raised this concern before about underutilizing space and, and it certainly wouldn't be very efficient to do that, to build new classrooms when you can underutilize the ones you already have. And it kind of, piggybacking on that point, I had, you know, I just kind of wanted to run through, through some things with Randy. And so.
Sure.
So this updated uh, DFP, you know, the one being says new Calvary for 400 students, but really, we're talking about 350 capacity, right?
That is correct, we are talking about 350 in, uh, enrolled there, but designing common spaces to be for, for 400. So there's some bumps in, like the library and the cafeteria and some of those common spaces to, to uh, enlarge those slightly to accommodate up to 400 students. It, and, and that would be the, as simple as adding two classrooms in the future to, to increase that capacity from 350 to 400, if that was ever needed.
And, and we're doing this reduction from 400 to 350 to make the numbers work because there's not enough students to justify 400, is that correct?
Um, I, I, I don't know that I'm the best one to answer that question. I, I would say that the 350 uh, enrollment over the 400 capacity was something that the board had discussed previously and kind of settled on as a, as a good path uh, forward.
Okay. So, so, so we said, I thought we said 400 when we submitted the DFP.
In the September meeting, when we discussed our options, we discussed building a Calvary Elementary School with capacity for 300 with common spaces. with common spaces for four, an option for three fifty and an option for four hundred. At that time, we focused on it primarily as cost-saving measures rather than its impact on capacity. But we had considered and discussed all three of those options with regard to Calvary Elementary School's capacity.
Yeah, I, I remember the discussion, but I think we approved the D F P under the four hundred law. Is that, am I not recalling that correctly?
Yeah, the, I mean, the, uh, the D F P option number four includes a new Calvary for four hundred.
Right. And if we, if we listed it four hundred, we have an issue, um, from an enrollment standpoint of fulfilling all these obligations of hitting eighty-five percent. Is that, am I, is that correct? Is that a fair statement?
I think that's accurate.
Okay, so we got to reduce it to at least three fifty to begin with. And so then, we're looking, so, so under this, under, if I'm, and Randy, I want to run through this with you. We're showing, so if we, if we look at Calvary as a three fifty capacity, and then we show Glasscock as a, three seventy-five capacity, right?
We had it at three seventy-five, and in the, uh, proposal, I had proposed making that three fifty, make basically all of the four elementary schools, including New Calvary, to be three fifty.
Okay, no, I, I, you're talking about enrollment, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, the left, the left column's enrollment, the right column's capacity.
Yes, you're right. It's, it's enrollment over capacity. So the capacity at, at Glasscock is three hundred and seventy-five.
Okay, so three seventy-five and then, and then this four hundred at Lebanon Elementary, that's post renovations, right?
That would be, uh, post, um, so common spaces would be built initially for four hundred, and then that would be post if there was ever a need in the future to add two classrooms at twenty-five students each to bump the co- bump the enrollment up to, uh, four hundred.
Okay, and then the capacity at West Marion is, um, four seventeen.
That is correct.
So, I guess it may be a classroom issue, but just looking here, you know, I show, I see Glasscock has, um, fifty-five thousand square feet. And West Marion's forty-three thousand square feet. So Glasscock is twelve thousand square feet larger. And the capacity is, what, twenty-three, five, um, forty-two students less?
Um, capacity is based solely on sta- the number of standard classrooms that you have. Um, so not necessarily on, on other items like, like gymnasium space or other, um, you know, specialty spaces. Capacity is totally calculated on the number of standard classrooms that you have in a facility. Uh, so, you know, that's, that's one reason why we're showing that two thousand square foot, uh, addition at West Marion for the gym, because that gym is really small relative to the number of students that are at that elementary school.
Okay. And then, um, so, and I apologize, I should have had some of this math done before I came in. So three fifty plus, three seventy-five plus. So we're talking about having a total capacity of fifteen forty-two. And we got to be at eighty-five percent of that, right?
Yes, that is correct. And as, in individually, as each individual school and collectively as the four elementary schools, they all need to be at least eighty-five percent utilization.
Okay. And the numbers we're looking at are two thousand nineteen numbers, right? When, when we look at this fourteen hundred and fifty enrollment.
Yes, that is correct. That is the SAR two thousand nineteen enrollment.
Okay. And, and, um, I think we're all aware that that numbers probably went down. Does it, does that number include that large class? Tim, can you answer that question? Does the two nineteen number, twenty nineteen enrollment number include the large class that moved on to the middle school? So, so that number's probably more like fourteen hundred now. And projected to go down. So, I mean, I, you know, that's, that's my concern. I mean, I, I agree with Jim because it looks to me like if we build a new Calvary of three hundred and fifty capacity, which is already reducing it by fifty, then what we talk, then, you know, then what was submitted on the D F P, that means roughly we got to, there's got to be three hundred students there, which means, you know, roughly a hundred students over where they are now. And looking at these capacity numbers and the current enrollment numbers, it looks to me like primarily they have to come from Glasscock. Now, that, I guess that doesn't mean, and that goes back to Jim's point, it doesn't mean we have to directly take from Glasscock, send them to Calvary. We could send students from Lebanon to Calvary, then Glasscock to Lebanon and so forth. But if we remove a hundred students from Glasscock, you know, that's essentially four classrooms. That it certainly appears to me would be underutilized. I understand, you know, Mr. Trud, discussed a potential pandemic baby boom. And I guess, you know, we should start hitting some, some results of that in a couple of months. From March, I guess, is when, when this shutdown started. So, I guess fortunately for us, for us, we'll kind of see if that's going to be a trend or not, but, um, I just want to make sure I get, you know, I got these enrollment numbers down because, or, or these, uh, capacities down. Because it certainly appears if, uh, Glasscock can certainly handle more than three hundred and seventy-five students. You know, I think roughly five hundred there now, or maybe that includes preschool, but our four forty or whatever the number is. And so, um, I think that would create a, a situation where we'd have quite a bit of unutilized space, uh, there. But I think that, um, I think that's all of my questions, Randy. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Randy or any further comments? Okay. Okay, thank you, Randy. And, and I guess hang around, we might have some more questions later. Do you have something else?
Yes, I just, I felt like it would be appropriate for Randy to explain the timeline. I mean, I, I know the board is interested in when that hearing packet's going to come, right? Or if that might not be something that you, you want to talk about, you may want to wait, but just, if, if you want to just take a few minutes to kind of run through what'll happen next.
Sure, sure. So, so at this point in time, um, a- as we, as I mentioned at the beginning, so, so John Gilbert has responded back with these comments. Uh, once he gets a, it gets an answer on how the board is moving forward, he will send the hea- hearing packet to the district. And the district will conduct the hearing, uh, the public hearing. Um, and I think, uh, Scott and Mike are on board to do that. Uh, I think Mike is actually the public hearing officer, uh, as identified by the board. Um, and then the, the, that, that plan will come back to the board for a final, uh, approval and vote. And then it gets submitted to K B E, Kentucky Board of Education, uh, to be put on their agenda, and it has to be put on their agenda forty-five days prior to, uh, their, uh, meetings. And they have meetings, uh, every two months. Uh, so at this point in time, uh, I would say that you're probably looking to be on the, uh, April. Uh, probably not going to have time to get on the February board meeting, definitely not going to have time to go on the February board meeting at this point in time. So you're probably looking to be on the April K B E board meeting for their review and approval, which means we need to get everything wrapped up and approved by the middle of February. And, and once it goes to the K B E Kentucky Board, um, then it, you know, if, if they approve it, it'll, it'll become the official document. Uh, I'm sure they'll have questions, um, a- and there'll be certainly, uh, comments, um, about this in particular.
Thank you, Randy. I just know that that's something that a lot of folks have been waiting for, so I just wanted to ask the question.
Question. Any other questions or comments, uh, for Randy or about the F P four?
Uh, yes, one, one more additional comment, uh, and just because I don't know. Does the packet for the public hearing, does that include drawings, uh, three D models, anything like that? Because the last public meeting that we had, we had drawings and, and all that whenever they was talking about for the high school. A lot of one is, is all that part of his end, or how does that usually work?
There are not any specific drawings or images associated with the public hearing. Um, that is literally, uh, a, a review of the D F P document as it's going to be proposed or will be proposed. Um, and then it's, uh, just that, it's, it's open for the public to make any comments that the board, uh, can take into consideration as they finalize and approve the D F P.
Okay, was I thinking of a different meeting then where there were poster boards up there with the layouts and stuff, or was that? Did that not happen?
I, I'm not sure which meeting you're referring to. Uh, I'm, I'm remembering that that one L P C meeting, I think it was an L P C meeting in particular, there was some, uh, images and three D images that had been previously prepared based on, uh, the interview for the project that took place a, a couple of years ago at this point in time. And I think what, I think that may be the images that you're referring to. Were they at the high school?
They were.
Yeah.
Were at the high school of, uh, and, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong on this, because, uh, I'm trying to remember. I was on the, I was sitting on the other side then, so.
Hey, Joyce, Scott, I, I think I can help explain that. Um, I think the meeting you're referring to was a public forum with the L P C in those, uh, posters there. This is actually the public hearing, which is a little different than a public forum. The hearing is actual, the final set. The public has opportunity to provide feedback to you guys before you all approve that plan to send on to the state boards. It's a little bit different, but you are correct. There was some drawings there at a public forum of the L P C's meeting.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm just, you know, to be equal and fair here, uh, if, if we was going to do that for the high school, would we not do that for a new elementary school as well? And just curious about that.
Traditionally, this is Scott again. Traditionally, that has not been the case. Like I said, it's a little bit different setup for a public forum. Because it's more of a dialogue potentially. The public hearing is not dialogue. It's just literally a recording of the public input to the comments to feed, and the public hearing officer will actually conduct a report and submit that to you guys at a meeting to approve, to send on as part of the whole packet to send to the Kentucky Board of Education.
Okay, so then, so the, the actual public hearing, the public doesn't comment, we just, we discuss it then?
But, but they comment, but there's not much, there's no dialogue back and forth between the board, L P C and the community. It's just the provide their comments.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on D F P four? Okay, I had something I just wanted to throw out to the board pertaining to this BG one on the, uh, for the renovation of the high school. Are there any, does anybody have any comments or remarks they'd like to make about that or questions?
I wasn't aware that the BG one for the high school was on the agenda for discussion.
Well, I would, I, you know, I would assume it's under this plan, but I mean, I guess it's, since we started the meeting, been deleted. But, uh, not any kind of action item or anything. I just wanted to, I think it, I think it'd be a good idea for this board to just discuss this, uh, renovation. Is anybody opposed to discussing? Okay.
I think it would be fair of us to, um, remember, uh, that we're not allowed to amend the agenda in a special session and discussion items do have to be included on the agenda. So I'm not sure what the repercussions are of amending the agenda in a special session, but we might want to be aware of those before we have that discussion.
So we have, uh, we have a discussion item of D, discussion, discussion of district facility plan four.
Correct, and Marion County High School is no longer on that plan.
I, 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 I'm going to come in also if possible. It was on this plan until a few minutes ago. Uh, due to the fact that Randy said he was taking it off, but I still think it is fair to include it due to the fact that it is on this plan.
Okay.
I mean, I, we'll have to discuss it if, I don't know what any, I don't know what repercussions there would be from us having a conversation about it. Um, you know, like I said, we're not taking any action. Uh, or if you would, Mr. Trud, feel more comfortable, if we have a scheduled work session for discussion of redistricting, uh, options and things, we could add, we could add it to that, uh, you know, we could add it to that work session if you feel more comfortable talking about it then.
I think that would probably be a good idea, uh, given that it wasn't included on the agenda so that the public could be aware that that conversation was going to happen. It would also give board members an appropriate amount of time to bring to the conversation any questions that they might have about the BG one specifically.
Yeah. I understand that, but I, you know, I, I believe, I, I mean, I believe we're okay because the high school renovation was on the D F P four that we approved. And it's in this, it's in this information. I, I really don't believe that the public would have any issue, uh, you know, saying that they missed out on something because they didn't know it was going to be part of the discussion. And my, you know, my concern that I, you know, that I want to, I'll just put this out there for the board to think about so that when we have this, uh, work session, then they can bring their thoughts to it then. But, you know, my concern is that we've drafted a plan based on bonding potential, which is a word, meaning that's potentially what we can have. I think we all know that we had a significant increase in bonding potential from, we, we, we use the number like twenty-nine million forever. And then we used thirty-nine million. And almost every bit of that increase came within a month. And that came because there was a dramatic drop in interest rates. And I think if we, the question I would have to the board is, I think it's obviously a good idea to always have a backup plan. And if we commit to fourteen, fifteen million dollar renovation at the high school, and since we had this discussion about bonding potential increase, uh, the ten-year treasury rate has probably risen about a third of a percent in a couple of months. So what's it going to be in a year or sixteen months? It may be exactly where it is now. It may be where it was two months ago. We still may be at thirty-nine million. If so, that's great. We've got enough funds to complete the plan. But my concern is, what if it goes back to thirty-two, thirty-one? What if rates just normalize? They don't have to be high. Just what if they normalize? And we're back to thirty to thirty-two million, whatever, somewhere in that range. And we've committed fifteen million dollars to a high school renovation, which will leave us, let's say roughly another fifteen million. And then if we're going to leave anything in a reserve account uh, for future expenses, how, how are we going to build both a new Calvary and renovate that? And I just think that's something, you know, that we need to think about. And I just wanted to throw that out there. We don't have to have any conversation about it. We can do that at the work session. We can do that at the work session. But I just like, want to be thinking about that. What, you know, what are we going to do if, if we get, if we find ourselves in that? So with that, I'll move on. So now we're going to item four, Student Learning Services, and I need a motion for four A.
Is it possible for Leanna to share her screen again so that we can see the agenda on our screens, please?
Okay. Working on that.
Thank you.
This is Jim. I make a motion to consider approval of the updated 20, 21 pay dates.
This is Carrie. I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Mr. Spalding, you want to give us a brief statement?
Sure. So I'm not sure how much you're all aware of this, but KDE had earlier, just a couple of weeks ago, actually, the first of December, notified all school districts in the state that they, don't get too excited just yet, had $130 million in cash funds that was going to expire at the end of the month, and they were going to distribute that out to, to the school districts. Our share was in the $660,000 range. And here's a caveat, they're reducing our seat fund by the same, by the same amount. With, with the catch of being, we had to expand these funds by December the 30th before they expire because it's our federal funds. So what we're going to do is utilize a part of those funds to cover December's payroll. That way, it's an easy in and out general entry for us to make sure that happens, that we did not lose any of our seat allocation. We will allocate heads up going forward. After this month, you'll start seeing a reduction in general fund seat because this will actually hit fund two because it's considered a grant. So overall, we're not supposed to losing seat funds. It's just going to be allocated a little differently. And this will allow us to utilize those funds to have expiration December the 30th on.
Any questions or comments? Okay, okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Odds have it. Need a motion for four B?
This is Peggy. I make a motion to consider approval to accept the Kentucky Department of Education comments of the district facility plan.
This is Carrie. I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
This is Jim. Basically, we're just acknowledging that this is more or less, we're acknowledging these comments. Is that correct?
I think we're, I think we would be revising our plan to, to accommodate the comments.
Okay, okay.
Is that, is that fair statement, Randy? Is Randy with us?
That's my understanding of it as well as our acceptance of it being changing our plan, right?
Yeah, sorry, I had to find my unmute button. But, but yes, that's, that's correct. That would be my understanding as well.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll be a no. Okay, so four C, do we, do we need to move to table that or anything?
I would, I would move to table.
Okay.
I'll just to, I mean, it's, it's not going to get, it's not going to, it's going to die because
Right, I mean, B got approved, so.
I mean, is anybody going to make a motion?
This is Carrie. I'll make a motion that we table item four C. This is Peggy. I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Moving on to five, need a motion for five A. I move that we consider approval of Jonathan C. Shaw and Grant Architewith employing attorney's contract.
This is Joey. I'll second.
I will just speak up to saying that we have had a working relationship with Bob Chinawith and Grant. Mr. Chinawith, same, obviously, Bob Chinawith is retiring, and Grant, his son, is actually going to work in the firm with Mr. Shaw. The proposal is very, and it's, it's a good, it's a good number, and it's a great way to keep that relationship, and there's some institutional knowledge that Grant brings with him from Marion County. So, you know, that's, that's something we use as needed. It's not something we use every day, but I, I would like to respectfully ask the board to continue that relationship with Grant.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Odds have it. Need a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. This is Peggy.
This is Jim. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Needing adjourn. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, all. Have a great evening.
You too.
Have a good break and a good Christmas, everybody.
Y'all too. Merry Christmas.